Morning, how are you? That would be great. Let's say, say me. Leon, how you doing?
Good.
Yeah, now I'm going to go back.
Do you want to probably don't tell?
Yeah. Back to snowing. Pretend like you guys like each other. But he's friends.
When I was on hand, I'm gonna go friends.
Tell everybody's friends.
Because we're already taking.
You can always push it all in.
Very much, probably us pretty much do with. All of us pretty much daily.
I said.
Oh, there's enough.
And I is. I'm going to actually.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, he has.
I think that my.
Yeah.
No, it's very common. Well, I thought. They sure that's not a strength for you. How close to us can I? That's if you let him have it to him. I see what they're hoping to get down to. So. Face very social. How to face them up.
They.
I'm really happy. I really have a great job. And that's why we're basically much more. Very nice. The other day. However, you know.
Yes, yeah.
Hi, good to meet you.
Harper? Nice to meet you, Harper. Awesome, very good.
And I pay probably my paycheck.
I'm gonna show you.
Uh, yeah. Uh, you want? We can't all four sign it at once, so who do you want? Okay. Okay. Probably in front. Yeah, front line up here and we'll, we'll stand up or whatever. If that do it. So, okay. You bet.
How are you, sir?
Good, how are you doing this morning?
As I am doing, what? You want?
Yeah.
So. I don't need such a long. That why?
It's all been a short romance. How long can you have that?
Why? That was a cute time.
She helped.
Don't you do?
You will pay a talk.
Right.
I didn't do.
Thank you.
Never do.
Thank you.
You're right.
Well, that's why.
So.
The army is white out.
Yeah. Hope to see him just.
Um, like. My, 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 my. You were never too much for saying. They didn't answer. I said, I'm completely question is what he is. Well, he just saw me. It happened very much. It was possible. They would have these. I don't know. Didn't ever take it. But it's been my way. So the. Oh, it's like. You're gonna give three things. I don't see. I mean.
Oh, it's not good. Yeah. Now, please. So now what you say?
Of her.
Go back.
All very good. Spend that. Yeah, that's not something I have. Questions that I can hear. And my question very. What is it? Pretty good. Actually. Good. I'm very sorry. We got. There's some. Hey, well. Good man, it was head. Yeah, very nice. Very. I see. Uh. I certainly didn't get. You know. But, uh, this lady fucking.
Hey, David. Hey, he's up.
This is. This is. I'm.
That shit. Big one.
How you doing? All right, too many people. Yeah. He's not here. He has been. No, mine was always. You know, we had them. Put mine back up on this.
Uh. You. Fine. President.
How many of that shit? Pretty like this.
Thanks for that.
Let's be joining us for same by now.
Don't know.
Um, Kegan, did you hear from Mitch? No response.
Mitch, your question.
Um, we hadn't heard from Laura.
Yeah. We'll be.
Yeah. Huh?
We're probably.
Yeah.
I see. Oh, you saw. I did that in five.
She's. Hey.
Susan have to be Susan. She is. So. Can you all miss? Spring.
All right, I'll call this meeting to order. It is nine oh two and, uh, we have a quorum. Uh, and we are expecting Commissioner Mitch Curtis to show up at some times. So are there any general announcements? There's not, uh, are there any public comments? Do we have anybody sign up for public no comments? All right, we'll move to item number four. Discuss, consider proclaiming the week starting October the fifth, twenty twenty five as a national four H week. So Leon, you want it? You want to get up and?
Yes. The grace and commissioners, we appreciate the opportunity to come in and visit the fuel. Uh, we do have our national effort, our national four H week. Uh, in October, and we would love to have you participate in signing our proclamation. We've brought in several of our four H officers and, and members. We've also got our adult leadership with us today. So, uh, I think Harper is, she is the president of our.
Okay, would you introduce officers?
I'll let Harper do that.
Okay. All right.
Good morning, my name is Harper Ellis and I'm New Van Zandt, Florida president. Here I have Avery and she is your first vice president. We have Jase Wilson, who is our sergeant at arms. Anne Marie, who's your historian. Jay Skelland as your treasurer. We guys are will team at this time.
All right, very good.
Oh, and then we also have our adult leaders here as well. So, Belinda Hickel is our president. We have Corey Simpson as our vice president and Ashley Wilson as your treasurer.
All right. Very good, you want to come up here and read us the proclamation? Actually. Do you have two there? Okay, go ahead.
Whereas this year's national four H theme, we think beyond ready reminds us that four H is building a ready generation in a world that change and equips young people with skills for the future while meeting them where they are ready today. Whereas four H is America's largest youth development organization supporting six million youth across the country. And whereas four H programs are delivered by the cooperative extension system, a community of more than a hundred public land-grant colleges and universities across the nation. So that for, that provides experiences for young people to learn by doing. Whereas four H is in every city and county in the United States and helps six million youth become engaged, successful, and independent. And whereas four H connects young people and adults to their communities, preparing them for work and life through experimental and inquiry-based learning while providing emerging research for positive youth development. And whereas expanding from a strong agricultural roots, four H helps young people explore the world around them and grow into productive adults. And whereas supporting future leaders in science, agriculture, and community leadership is an important imperative for the U- US Department of Agriculture National Institute of Food and Agriculture four H program. And now therefore we, the Van Zandt County Commissioners Board, do hereby proclaim October fifth through of the eleventh, twenty twenty five as national four H week. Throughout Van Zandt County and encourage all of our citizens to recognize four H for the significant impact it has made and continues to make by empowering youth with the skills they need to lead for a lifetime. In witness thereof, we appear to set our hands on this September eighteenth, twenty twenty five.
All right, very, very good. If you will hand me this, the proclamation, I will get it start to commissioners to sign it. And then if you want to come up and stand right here, we can do a group shot.
George, you all want to say?
Yeah, we'll stand, just saying, we got to sign, we're signing the document.
George. Right, everybody look right here. Count of three, there we go, one, two, three, let's do it again. One, two, and three, one more for me, one, two, and. All right.
All right, so.
Thank you.
All right, John, and you want to get a? You want to get a picture me signing the document?
Sure. Part two, part two, pointers. Expand. Excuse me. I'm signing, he's in a hurry.
How long?
Three more. Three more days.
All right. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you. So is there a motion to approve the resolution, uh, proclaiming, uh, October fifth, twenty twenty five as the national four H week?
Motion.
Is there a second? Motion has been made by Commissioner Barton and seconded by Commissioner Phillips. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion passes, very good. So. That's it, yeah, yeah, y'all don't need to hang around for the round. Trust me. But we need to make a copy of it.
Well, I'll have first.
Okay.
It sounded.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, they're gonna do it.
Yeah. You're good. Thank you. Well, we got. You have. Yes. Hopefully.
All right, item number five, discuss, consider moving September twenty fourth, Commissioner Court meeting date. Suggested new meeting date is Friday, September the twenty sixth, twen- uh, nine AM. Purpose of moving it is because, uh, one of the commissioners will not be here on, uh, Wednesday. And this is a significant event where we're going to be approving the budget. Uh, hopefully, we are going to be approving the budget. And so we moved it to, uh, the, the motion, I guess the motion is to move it to Friday, September twenty sixth at nine AM. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'd make that motion. Um, is this, is this one of those that you need? All the votes, you need, you need everybody to, to, uh, record their vote?
I, I believe so, yes.
So that's really the, that's the reason why we gotta.
Right.
Gotta make this.
All right, motion been made, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion passes. Item number six, discuss, consider authorizing county judge to sign amendment number two to Southern Health Partners for inmate care extending the nursing hours to ten hours per day, seven days per week, and a fixed three percent increase in the fee. The base fee and per diem rate for December twenty five, uh, twenty twenty five to November twenty twenty six.
Is that reflected in the budget already?
It, it is anybody, yes, sir, it is.
I'd make the motion to, uh, to, to approve this fixed increase and authorize county judge to sign this amendment number two.
Is there a second? Motion has been made, is there a second?
Say.
Okay. Uh. Any, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion passes. Item number seven, discuss and report the adoption of Senate Bill eleven seventy three to raise competitive bidding thresholds from fifty thousand dollars to a hundred thousand dollars effective September first, twenty twenty five for local government code two six two point zero two three. Competitive requirements for certain purchases. And Nicole from our auditor's office will give us an update on this.
I, I just wanted to remember works before, um, and the works that asked me, um, eleven seventy three that raises, um. Competitive bidding threshold, um, it used to be fifty thousand, like the clothes and go out the battle awards or, you know, clothes. They've not raised that to a hundred thousand. And I just wanted to make note that, like, any of our contracts are trying to work with materials or with the whole, whole state and under contract. So they'll have to go through their contract in next year. But even then, like people's. Any new products, they don't have to raise them on the contract for those can now fall under this new.
So is that? For example, if, if, I want to just use the rock bid, they didn't turn in. This year, Vietnam, oh, rock, and we can only spend up to fifty thousand. Does that move it to a hundred thousand?
Correct.
Uh.
Is that what we said?
Yeah.
I just wanted to make.
As long as that product's not already under.
That's what I'm saying, well, this, I guess I can say like our coaster didn't, didn't turn in a bid and I could only get up to fifty thousand dollars. Now I could get up to a hundred thousand dollars with them, but nobody having a bid on.
Yes.
Correct.
On them.
Right, it makes the process a lot easier.
Oh, yeah, uh, I agree, I agree.
And also.
To prove it.
If, if we go through buy board or one of those recognized, uh, government, uh, well, purchasing arrangements, we do not have to do competitive bidding to correct. That is also. If that's okay.
I like it.
All right.
I'll second this.
So, well, then, uh, there's nothing to us approve. This is just a, uh, for our information, they need to do this to, uh, no, uh, because this affects our purchasing policies. And so, so that's just informing us that the change of purchase.
Well, then I vote in favor.
There you go. I'll vote in favor.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, if somebody wants to make a motion to abide by the, the, the law as it exists now, that's okay.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know about that. Now that you make, now that you say it that way.
It takes, it takes a lot of effort to keep us informed, doesn't it? All of the. So I appreciate you bringing that in for us, yeah.
You're wrong.
Okay, item number eight, discussing considered appointment of the county auditor and assistant county auditors in the establishment of the respective salaries pursuant to el- the local government code eighty four point zero two one. So, uh, is anybody gonna make this presentation? The, the documents are all in the binder that were signed by the district judge. Those who don't know, district judge is the one who's responsible for the auditor's department and he makes the appointments and sets the salaries. And, uh, he has done that, uh, for the, uh, uh, establish the representative salaries.
That's also reflected in our budget.
That is correct, yes, those numbers are reflected in our budget. So is there a motion?
A motion.
To consider, consider appointment of the county auditor, assistant county auditors in establishment of respective salaries pursuant. So, I mean, now's your time to get back, get even.
I know.
So. Right.
I'm going to approve it.
All right, second.
I'll say.
All right, motion has been made, second, is there any, uh, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Uh.
Pose like sign, motion passes. Item number nine, discuss, consider appointment salary of the official court reporter of the two ninety fourth district court. Again, the district judge appoints the, uh, the court reporter and has established the salary based on the fiscal twenty six, the proposed fiscal year twenty six budget. So is there a motion to, uh, uh?
This was in the budget.
Except this one, yes.
Could use it.
Yes.
I'm making.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion has been made, second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion passes. Item number ten, uh, discuss, consider approval of bond for Nicole Nix, assistant county auditor of the amount of five thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve the bond?
Nicole, oh, man, okay, I'll make that motion.
Motion has been made and there's a second. All right, uh, motion made, second, all those in favor say aye.
Mitch.
Mitch Curtis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion passes. Item number eleven is consent agenda. These items are all considered routine, however, there are no, uh, uh, there's no items for A and B. There's no county bills submitted for payment and there's no ratified bill submitted. Therefore, there's only item number C, discuss, uh, the approval of line item transfers. So is there a motion to approve the line item transfers?
Motion.
Second.
All right, motion been made, seconded, uh, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion passes. All right, that concludes, well, that doesn't conclude our meeting, but that, uh, we will now move into item number twelve, which is our budget workshop. And, uh, where we will talk about our budget. See if I can. So, uh, I put the budget out, uh, the updated, it's, it's called the version nine sixteen, because, uh, September sixteenth was the date I updated it. And, uh, are there any, uh, questions, uh, concerning? What was put out there, uh, I, with the work that the, uh, all the departments did and, and, and the commissioners themselves. In, uh, in cutting money out of the budget, we got the budget down to a deficit of, or negative, uh, three hundred and ten thousand. So, uh, which in my viewpoint is a balanced budget from a standpoint that, uh, we will, we will have three hundred and ten thousand in unspent funds from the budget next year. Uh, just, uh, in, in most case, in, uh, most likely. So let me see if I can find the page. Come on. Come on. Go away, there we go. Thank you. Oh, it's not bookmarked and it's supposed to be, that's not, that's not.
So you think it's acceptable to be three hundred and ten thousand in the red on a budget?
Yes.
That's not including what people are giving back. It's always more than that.
Let's say giving back unspent funds for fiscal year.
I think Kevin wouldn't know.
It's any way we can, it's any way we can change our, the way we do budgets, like, I mean, I know this, I'm not saying this proper, properly, but, um. You start a budget process without knowing how much that you have. And, and then you started with, we started with raises before we knew where we were at.
Well, we could, we definitely can change it next year.
We just need to. Would it work? From, this is for next year. If we just add three and a half percent to what we took in this year? And that would give us a. A baseline kind of number, pretty close.
That's what, that's, that's what Bobby was saying last week. I didn't, I didn't quite understand what he was saying. It finally kind of dawned on me this weekend. Um, you'd be, you'd be closer in the ballpark if you started with those numbers. I think you would.
Yeah, that'd be the voter approval. Tax rate would be three and a half percent. You just add three and a half percent to what came in this year. Say ten million came in this year at three and a half percent, ten million.
You're not gonna go over that.
Even if you wanted to leave yourself a little bit of, uh, a leadway there, you could just do three percent.
Yeah.
You know? And. You know, that, that gives you a half percent leadway. I thought, I, I may be wrong.
But that worked.
I think it would be closer than what we.
Well, it makes, it makes too much sense to the government. I mean, like.
So, uh. Yes, this is a budget workshop. It, yeah.
So, first of all, Bishop, uh, thank you for understanding me not being, uh, available in person. Last week. But, uh, earnings here and I was really in, that's what we do. Uh, I understand it's a three hundred and ten negative. Deficit within the budget, I can tell you, uh, based, based upon my math and then, uh, the sheriff's office budget. That my calculations alone, uh, just on, on salaries. Uh, including my old, my office, the jail, my support staff, operations. Uh, the, uh, dog pulled me on the sun, it's very rough, I asked the help today to figure it out. Uh, roughly three hundred and seventy seven thousand, four hundred and eighty nine dollars, roughly, is what, just on sound, that salary is what is, is, is coming back.
That's not including your operating cost.
Yeah, that's not including my operating cost. I'm operating cost, I was sitting here and I went, I went, uh, lock my block, unlocked this, uh, fifteen percent back out of, uh. Five hundred and nine thousand, another three percent back, and again. I put that, you know, we go thirty percent, sixty percent back, so, you know, uh. That's really back. But to help. I'll say that three hundred and ten, not all of it.
And that, and that money will be available to us this, this, this year that we're fixing October twenty twenty five to.
Yes, it'll be back in them.
Well, Kevin.
It's already in the budget, it just didn't get spent.
Did that instead?
I, I already in the.
Just on that salary, said seven thousand dollars. Um, if you remember, uh, uh, a bunch of workshops, when I hang you up, I knew that I was going to be giving back, uh. I was changing my funds back and, um, I didn't put in my budget, uh, when I turned in my, my budget request, y'all, I didn't put anything. I don't do equipment, none of that, pretty much just leaving home. And with, uh, with the request that I could possibly use some of that last salary funds to buy, uh, equipment for all my expenses with meditators. So, uh, that's based upon just the last salary. Uh, three hundred and seventy seven thousand, yes, rough, rough numbers for me there. Um, I would only, I would only come to the commissioners, uh, in the next. Next year, on six, uh, after all of the first, right? And ask for, uh, for me to be able to use a very small percentage of that, like for taxes. for tasers to equip all my deputies, and that's not counting the other percentage back for all the other units operation.
And, and I, it was, I, I have talked to Kevin about it and I've told him that in some of the past meetings that we've had, we have told everybody if they would work with us and get this cut, if they come back needing something like that, they've asked for it, we have all already agreed that if it was necessary, that we would, we would, we would, uh, let them.
I feel like, I, I feel like all departments, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's not a fault problem, it's, we have money that go, give it back, I think that if we have something and we just really need that, you know, the county in some way that we need we should try to give that money, you can look it up, as long as the deficit of the budget, just as the same care of the governor's, uh, charge.
Now, I told him, I think we're all in favor of safety of our employees and our community and if he gives back the four hundred thousand dollars, that's just his department, we've already got a balanced budget just on that and, you know, give our deputies the, the equipment to be safer in tasers, it's not, how much, you know how much that's gonna be?
Well, I, I, I think we should go out for, try to get a grant, cause I know all the constables want tasers and I think it'd be appropriate for the county and, and, you know, to, to do it as a group to, to go out and get a grant, I think we need the grants available for tasers. Have you done any research on that?
I did, uh, there's some grants out there, I don't know, uh, all of that. It's, uh, all there for every part.
The, the sad, the bad part about that is, is a lot of that grants take a year to get done and that's so then you're sitting there a year without, you know, what's that?
So, I'm just curious, how much was turned in last year? Like what was the total for the county that was turned back in, we don't know how much that was?
I mean, no.
I don't know.
No, it's there.
I don't know right at the moment.
Well, we know he's gonna turn in three hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Right.
I figure he's gonna be pushing forward, but.
So it's over a million, you think it's over a million?
Of what?
What's turned in from all the department?
I don't know about, but, but, but he's, he's gonna be pushing half a million this year.
I think we should, now I told Kevin this, find out what's getting put back, where we're at and if it's in that contingency us as a commissioner's court will decide, hey, this is was needed to be done, or it doesn't need to be done, um, but if all of it comes back.
Well, let, let me say, when you say it's being put back, it, that is not a correct terminology, it never left is what the terminology, it's in our, it's in our general fund.
It's moving.
It's re-designated.
But we were close to two million in deficit.
I mean, because it's here on my budget, it's in my, in my, in my.
Yeah, it just, it, it's just getting moved from one pot to another.
I was being a good steward, so.
Okay, but we, we as a commissioners' court, we're not good stewards, cause we budgeted uh, close to two million in deficit spending. Uh, we as a commissioners' court, last year's budget was close to two million dollars in deficit. Uh, so you know, it's uh.
I don't like this, I don't like this, we're many, that's a number of things, and it's, we don't know, we, we have a burden to the situations above, uh, you know, a lot of that.
My concern is, I looked at two or three different departments, what they cut and now, well, just, you just take two, which would be the district judge's office and, um, constable in fourth.
Yeah.
And that's, that was two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand dollars. And I'm not so much concerned about the constable, cause his was a coroner employee. Right? But just say that they all cut it, because they, just say they cut it and they cut it really close, because they know they can come back to us. Right?
Well, that's what we've assured you about.
I'm not finished.
I, I'm just, I'm breathing.
I'm not finished, I'm just saying, we did say that. And that money comes back into the general fund and then we go make a big purchase and that money's not really there to give back to them and they cut thinking that we would have that money, I just wanna make sure that we've got enough to run the next year. If they cut it too lean, where they have to come back to us in July and we don't have anything to give them, there's some things that happen in district courts, they're pretty important, that they need, which has a, could have an effect on the jail and a, a whole lot of things. I wanna make sure that we have enough. You understand what I'm saying?
That's why I don't think we should do anything until I don't, I don't, we may, we don't, I, in my opinion, we don't do anything until everything goes back.
We don't approve, we don't approve a budget?
No, we approve a budget, but as far as, as uh, you know, like, Kevin's asking for tasers, we don't, we don't do that until we figure out how much came in and we get it all settled and then, you know, if we decide that they need tasers, yes, if, no, no need, but don't do anything until we got the hard numbers up here, everything comes in.
What's our number, what is our, what's this fiscal year?
I'm talking about.
For, for twenty-five?
What proves this budget that we have and then how much was, I don't know the term to use besides give back, uh, how much?
Yeah, you're asking twenty-five, this current year, the closeout of this current year, and what then that effect is?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Cause that doesn't occur till maybe December, late December.
Then we have to wait, just in my opinion, we, we make sure we got our ducks in a row before we do anything else.
Okay, and then.
Cause we haven't had them in a row, we're trying to get them in a row, like, we thought we did but we actually didn't, now, we, we were working off what we presumed was there and.
But we've got it down now, the judge has the numbers down to the, pretty close and what is not being used is an unknown, but it will be known in December and then we can work off of that.
We have something coming up in November though.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, I, you understand what I'm saying? Like, I don't wanna I don't wanna put us up in a bad position where if they come back, that money's already been allocated to something else.
Right. Right, well, we're, uh, we're, we're waiting on auditor's department to come up with what our fund balances are, they're, they're working on it, okay?
I'm, I'm understanding, I'm not being ugly, I'm just saying.
There is, there is money there, we know we started out with nine million, or nine to twelve million dollars and uh, uh, we haven't dug into that very much, to, to be quite honest, for what I said, but, have not.
Oh, I'm.
I don't believe so.
I bet you, I bet you.
But I will be putting on, on this budget and uh, I will put uh, that permanent improvement I put down there at nothing, I'm gonna put four point two million in there and I'm gonna put contingency of four million dollars in there too. And both of those may or may not get spent, but they gotta be in the budget if we wanna spend it.
That's besides the six million.
That, that is correct, well, that six million is, again, it does.
As a fund.
Six million is not in the budget, that is, that is part of our fund balance.
It's a fund balance.
But one of the things that I have been instructed, told by several other auditors is that you, you actually put all of your available cash in the budget.
Correct.
So that it can be spent if need be.
So is that six million gonna be just on a contingency line?
Yes.
Yes.
Right.
That's good.
So, that, that's what I'll, I'll put a contingency in there and I'll put the, the amount, I just wanna keep them separate, cause I didn't want them to be part of what it, what I consider our uh, daily operational expenses.
We will no longer have a fund balance, we'll have a contingency line.
Right. Well, something close. They're, they're two separate things.
I'm not being critical of you, Judge, I, 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 you look like you had a little fire in your eyes there, I, I, like, yeah, I know, like, yeah, I know, that's right. Well, hey, like, last week or week before last, we were said, you said it was around eight point nine, like, I, you know, that was a shock to me, because we, we were talking about, we had an auditor in here that said we had around fif- an outside auditor, Patillo and those guys, and they said we had fifteen, so that's what we were operating off, then we were told eight point nine, and now you're saying twelve. Up nine, nine to twelve.
Uh, uh, the cash report, uh, cash report that I run off of the deal shows we have like thirty-seven, thirty-eight million dollars.
Outstanding.
So, but again, I'm not sure where it goes, you know, wh- what it goes to.
Well, we do know that we're three hundred and ten in the hole, but that's not, I believe, what's getting moved and personally, I think we've done a pretty good job, but not just us, everybody, of getting to that and I know personally, this is my third one, first one really was learning, but I've learned more out of this budget than I have in the past three years, I know a lot more now than I didn't know the past couple of years, just trying to go through this.
Well, I think as a, as a commissioners' court, that we need to think, think all of our departments for what they have done and the, the, the hard work they put in to cutting their budgets to the bare minimum.
And I agree, um, it was a, it was a general, a joint effort by every, everybody, especially commissioners, I think you guys uh, did quite a bit, the, the net effect was taking the twenty-five percent to twenty percent.
And I wanna say to Sheriff Bridger, that you did turn it back in, that I understand what you're saying. You could, you could spend every bit of it, if you wanted to in your budget, but you, you were frugal and you had that leftover. So I understand that.
Bishop, just to go to the officer, you know? Thank you.
Yeah, I get it, I saw the, I, I, I saw that, so. Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're not. We got, we got the budget already, we're not gonna do any, or, I think, we're not doing anything, this is the budget.
There'll, there'll be a few fine tuning, a few areas of fine tuning, I found a major error I made in keying uh, this morning and uh, anybody who wants to tell me what it is, feel free to do so, but I just wanna see if anybody pays attention, knows what it is, so uh, I will correct it and uh, and uh, several other, I had, uh, Fire Marshal give me some, uh, more, uh, areas where he can cut and uh, so if there's any more cuts, I will put those in, I will do some more corrections and then I will have the final one out, uh, on Monday of next week and uh, uh, for everyone to look at. Okay? Any, any, we lost two commissioners, is there, is there any further discussion?
So, this is uh, a group to raise for all county employees in the budget?
That is still there, yes, it is.
Well, that's standard process.
Uh, that is, there's nobody that got a, a higher or, let me say, there's some adjustments that were made. If you're talking about trying to go ahead and, and do the wages or the salary things, get with me and we'll discuss it.
Uh, I'm kinda looking at, it was like, um, the forest, the three percent across the board, um, it looks like IT has had more than a three percent.
That is correct, if you will go back to the budget workshops, you will see that, uh, the discussion was that the IT uh, salaries are way below market, just as the court reporters' salaries were way below market and uh, Judge Martin asked for his court reporters and as winners to, to, to be at ninety-nine thousand and I asked for our IT department to go to have a ten thousand dollar increase in each one of the three people in the IT department, because they are so far behind as far as even coming close to being a market level and the court agreed to do that.
So, did that the same way you did, like last year?
And then you'll find there are other, there are other uh, individuals that got changed in their uh, classification uh, as far as what they are and uh, and so therefore their raise, their amounts went up to in that regard, all right, three or four of those.
Uh, have they done with, uh, any of the chiefs or anything like that, if all those people should be, be the same?
Yes, all the chiefs, the, the, all of the positions, the pay raise are that left the same. When you say the chiefs, everybody got a three percent raise, we didn't change uh, specific job classifications pay rates.
Judges, I added that for question, the, the part-time position that got moved to full-time? Was a three percent based upon the current part-time position or was it based upon bring them up to the equal competition?
Oh, I have to go back and look at it, I don't, I don't know, I can't answer that right offhand, I'd have to go look. All right, that was in the jail or in the sheriff's department?
Oh, the jail, I think.
Yeah.
That's the only administrative position they have installed in the jail side, so.
Mm-hmm, right. Okay.
So, I, I guess that the, the three percent be, you're asking, move them up?
Well, it's in, it's in this budget that's posted online, uh, uh, we'll go down here.
That's okay, no worries.
Okay, well, I, yeah, all right. So, any other questions? So feel free if, uh, and I'm waiting for somebody to tell me what error I made. People love to tell me I'm doing, did something wrong, so I know I did something wrong, I wanna see if anybody can find it uh, in there before I fix it, but it'll. All right. Anything else? Oh, I'm not gonna make it simple. Not gonna make it simple, all right, anything else?
What if they find two?
It'll be on social media now.
Well, that's, that's what I'm hoping, I'm hoping they'll find any other mistakes that I didn't catch, cause uh, there's quite a bit of data in there that uh, it's easy to catch, in fact, once I get everything, uh, once I make all the changes, final changes, then I will turn it over to the auditor's department and ask them to verify that the totals from one spreadsheet I've linked correctly to the other spreadsheet, just verify all my, all the numbers, so I'm gonna get you to do that. So, all right.
This went a lot quicker than I thought it would.
I did.
It's great.
All right. That should conclude our meeting today, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Said.
All right, motion by Commissioner Barton, seconded by Commissioner Phillips, is uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion passes, thank you very much, budget is uh, nine uh, forty.
David, you're gonna be here at six thirty tomorrow night, if you're here, you're right?
No.
For, for the meeting you got, for your.
I'm gonna be where you are, it's kinda like.
I told David to move the commissioners' court to six thirty Friday night.
He told, when he told me I was gonna have a decision bank, I said that decision already been made.
I need you to go to Texas, need to deploy Watin tonight.
Where is Watin?
It's as far east as you can go and stay in Texas before you're getting Louisiana.
Is it down there by Center?
I think it's beyond Center.
Well, I've heard of that, I just never realized that.
They're playing down there tonight.
Well, we've been there, those.
This is Senator, right?
Tomorrow's not a big day until the hour away. We ain't gotta go to touch your kids this year again.
I'll see you.
All right, see you tomorrow.
Well, thank you.
Take care.
You bet. See you, Mitch.